All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 p.m., September 11th. All members of the Planning Board being present, call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes for July 17th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meetings from July 27th, 2023.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to, actually, before I move on to the Committee Reports Administrative Action, I'll just let everybody know, for this evening, in the Committee Reports Administrative Actions, item number three is asked to be continued to our next meeting, which is 937 Miller Street Landscape Plan Acceptance. And then Agenda Item D, E, F, and I are all asking to be continued to our next meeting. That would be 1600 Shaw Sheen Street, 1600 Shaw Sheen Street II, 1789 Main Street, and 1439 Main Street. So if anybody is here for those, you are free to go because we will not hear anything on that this evening. With that, we'll return to Committee Reports Administrative Action. Any Committee Reports any members wish to make at this time?
None.
Move on to Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First note is that we have three new public hearings scheduled for the September 25th Planning Board meeting. The first one is 30 North Great Gate Road for a family suite special permit, 836-846 Main Street for a site plan review for additional parking at the Mirabelle, former Mirabella's Bakery, soon to be Berlandi. And the third new public hearing will be for the zoning bylaw amendment for town meeting, which is included in your packets. The Select Board has proposed a change to the zoning maps to include the Interstate Overlay District capturing 495 at International Place up near Andover Street and over on the West Side Neighborhood Business District on Woburn Street. And next item is the MBTA Communities. The second public feedback session is scheduled for this Wednesday, so in two days. On Wednesday, September 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Tewksbury Public Library, located at 300 Chandler Street. The press release and the registration link are posted to the homepage on the town website. Registration for this workshop is encouraged but not required, as it will add the person's email address to the distribution list for further updates on this zoning amendment process. This public feedback session will have a workshop format where participants will discuss the advantages and disadvantages unique to each site proposed for the MBTA Communities Overlay District. And anyone with questions is welcome to reach out to the Community Development Office. Next item, business updates. The Al Fresca Market held its ribbon cutting on Wednesday, September 6th last week at 1768 Main Street, and this is a full-service market with oven-fresh pizza, a deli counter, and seafood. And that's right next to the existing Al Fresca restaurant. And next, Walden Local Meats held their ribbon cutting on their one-year anniversary at 1668 Shaw Sheen Street on Thursday, August 17th. And they provide frozen storage space for small businesses, and they store their own sustainably sourced meats to deliver via their subscription meat share service. And last but not least, again, if you'll allow me to indulge, just promoting some of the events going on around town, and again, not exhaustive, just a few highlights. This coming Sunday, September 17th, at Tewksbury Memorial High School will be the National Night Out hosted by Tewksbury Police Department. The Fall Festival will take place on Saturday, September 23rd and September 24th at Livingston Street, 12 to 5 both days. The Whale Mobile will be at the Tewksbury Public Library on September 23rd from 10 to 12, and registration is required. The beep ball tournament, in conjunction with the Tewksbury Fire Department, is scheduled for Saturday, September 23rd as well. And then, again, everyone's favorite special town meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 3rd at Tewksbury Memorial High School. And anybody looking for further information on those items can check on the town website. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item Three, which was that 937 North Street, they asked to be moved to our next meeting, so we'll take it up then. Moving on to Agenda Item B, 4325 Marshall Street, Terramore Drive, as-built and street acceptance.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Matt Ginsberg, proponent.
Okay, so I think the thing to do, we got a letter from Alex earlier today, and I think the thing to do maybe is to kind of just walk through what we've done over the last year and a half, basically, to try to get to where we are. So we've essentially been preparing as-built documents since they started construction out there. So Matt's and my company have really kind of worked hand in glove, and as things were exposed, we were out there and located everything. We've been through this process quite a bit. It can be challenging as we get close to town meeting for acceptance, and we've really tried to anticipate what we can and provide as long a lead time as possible to work through any technical item. So just to kind of give you a sense for what we've done to date, April of 2022, we actually submitted pond as-bills and drainage calculations specific to the functioning of the ponds, right? So what we did at that point is we went out, we made sure that the volumes were essentially consistent with the design plans, as well as the control structure. We provided those to the DPW department. At that point, the ponds were functioning, and sometimes groundwater fluctuates, especially when you have a year like we've had with the intensity of the rain, in magnitude of the rain that we've gotten. So that was April of '22. Earlier this year, I think it was the first week in January, we formally submitted as-built documents. Matt and Arnie had everything done, with the exception of raising the castings and putting the final pavement course down, and then setting the bounds. So in an attempt to try to get all of the technical items addressed, we submitted first week in January. We received a review letter from DPW in May of 2023. They had a typical kind of review letter, and it took us some time to try to modify our as-built to address their concerns. We submitted the last week of July earlier this year. Essentially, this was a final as-built, with, again, with the exception of the bounds in the finished course of pavement, because we were doing those as the season progressed here. And we wanted to give the DPW an opportunity to review everything and make sure that we're putting pavement down before all of their items were addressed. In their review letter in May, it did indicate that one of our ponds is not draining. We understand that, we know that, we've presented a solution to DPW. We haven't gotten formal feedback, but we're prepared to move a plan forward to address that. The challenges that we have right now is, like, we've received weather here over the last nine months that is not consistent with the typical weather patterns even seasonally. Because we've had this issue in the past, and it has not held up street acceptance, the way we approached this, and what we wanted to do, was wait for the pond to dry out. Once the pond dries out, we can go into the pond, we can figure out what may be impeding the groundwater from going down, and then we can make the typical modifications that we need to do. If we had known that this was of the magnitude that would hold up a recommendation for street acceptance, we would have made provisions to go into a wet pond, de-water it, pump it out, and make the improvements. But we really didn't have that till earlier today. So this kind of comes as a little bit of a surprise. We thought we had all our ducks lined up. We thought we were in good shape. We are aware of the pond. Planning Board still holds the bond, right? So we're not looking for a bond reduction or anything. And we also have to satisfy the Conservation Commission under their certificate of compliance, right? So we have this pond that is holding a bit of water. It needs to be adjusted, and we're going to work with DPW over the next, I think we have three weeks, to try to get a solution to get their support. I think that's kind of where it sits right now.
All right, start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'd like to see this resolution come to be, like everybody else does, so that the residents of Terramore Drive have the benefits of being a town street, you know. I'm willing to do whatever we can and work with you guys to get it done. Even as far, I mean, timeframe-wise, are we tight as far as street acceptance for a town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the date the end of it, or, Alex, do you know that?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Is the date for town meeting acceptance coming to be soon?
Yes, that's going to be on Tuesday, October 3rd. And just to add some context to Mr. Hanley's, if you'll allow me, the extreme weather that we have had has made it difficult to manage the, you know, the draining of the pond. And I think in an ideal world, engineering and DPW's recommendation would be to have everything functioning as planned before they make a formal recommendation to accept the public way, because then it becomes their responsibility, of course. However, where we do still hold, I believe, the, at least the as-built bond, and I believe a portion of the roadway bond still, that can be held on to until the drainage issues are resolved. So that, just to give that to the board, that is an option.
Okay. If I can just piggyback on top of that while it's fresh. I was here, last time I was here, we talked about the intensity we got in one of the August rainfall events that was in excess of a 100-year storm. The system functions, right? We don't have issues out there from a perspective of public safety or anything like that. We really were put through a stress test. The system works really well. And just to note, this is a stormwater management system that will be the responsibility of the HOA, too. So it's not the responsibility of the town as we move forward.
Okay. So with that being said, I don't have a problem voting for you guys to get the street acceptance at town meeting and get it on its way. You know, I'm not worried about you guys leaving town. I know you guys are going to do the right thing as far as, and being able to work with us, you know, to release the bond eventually. So, I mean, so I'd be willing to allow this to go forward as far as accepting the as-bills, not quite completed yet, but just to assist you guys in getting the street acceptance in for town meeting. So the residents that live down there can get the benefits of the town being a regular town street and being plowed by the town and everything else. But, you know, you did a great job down there. It looks great. I've been down there today, and it looks awesome, fully occupied, I believe, right? Yeah, so, good job. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hanley, a quick question. Once you do get the swale kind of dried out a little bit there, where is the expectation that the water is supposed to be going there? I know the ground is saturated everywhere, but is it just perking into the ground, or...
Yeah, so that's the idea, is that it does perk into the ground. It's not perking into the ground right now. So there's a couple of things we can do. We can adjust the outlet structure that discharges that, so we reduce the amount of water that stands in the pond. We can raise up the bottom a little bit. We actually have a little room to do that. And then we could put a bypass in, so that we don't put as much volume into the pond. And it goes to the wet pond that's next, literally 20 feet away.
Is it overflow, basically? And on the paving, when you, is the paving completed, or is that, so the paving is completely done?
Paving's complete, yes.
Okay, so, because I have a list of items to be completed here, and then, I'm sorry?
It's a picture.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the next one, yep.
Okay, okay. I got, okay. And, yeah, I mean, I see a couple of minor items, and I understand that there is a time issue here. It would be great if we had a nice dry summer, and you could have got all that work done, but I think I'm with Mr. Fratelli, and I think we can go ahead and, you know, keep things moving. You know, it's all going to be done by the October 3rd meeting.
What I can tell you is that I will be on the phone tomorrow with DPW to just really define what they need in a path forward to be in a position where it can be accepted on the 3rd, yeah.
Okay. So with those caveats and those contingencies in place in the bonds, I don't have a problem, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Fratelli and Mr. Duffy pretty much summed up the concerns, and I also don't have a problem in trying to not have this be held up until May, so.
Okay.
No questions.
Mr. Lazzari?
Same. No additional questions from me. Doesn't look like this week is going to help you out rain-wise.
That's more of the same.
Hopefully it stops at some point.
Something I'm not used to.
I'm pretty much in the same boat. I mean, this is one of the byproducts of having a town meeting every six months. If you miss this, you're talking about a half a year before it can be resolved, which is, you know, doesn't work with the way the world works now. So I'd rather do this and let, you know, if there's some major malfunction, then it'll get brought up at town meeting, at which point, you know, then we're in a different boat. But I'd rather not be able to get it that far. And I want to take a chance on trying for our next meeting, because you never know who can't make it, and now all of a sudden we can't. You know what I mean? I don't want to do that with something that doesn't seem to be, you know, an end-of-the-world kind of thing. We don't have a million residents in here, you know, losing their mind over, you know, basement flooding or something like that, so.
All right, so if that's the case, then we'll ask the board, we're looking for a recommendation, right? So what recommendation, or do we have a recommendation from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept 325 Marshall Street, the as-built and street acceptance, in an effort to move forward, with the condition that they're going to resolve the issues that are outstanding presently, and hopefully by town meeting, we will be all set and ready to go.
Just the street except, it's not the as-bill right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, all right.
And is it just, are we going to do those individually, Mr. Chairman? Number four and number five, so Fraser Lane and...
Yeah, that's a separate one.
Understood, okay. All right, well, I second Mr. Fratelli's motion.
All right, so we have a motion to recommend acceptance for 325 Marshall Street slash Terramore Drive. We have a motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to... That brings us to B5, which is Fraser Lane, as-built and street acceptance.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Arnie Martel, proponent.
So we're here to essentially run through the same process that we just did for Terramore, but this is a little bit more unique. You might recall that this was a subdivision that was originally presented, approved, designed in 2001, I think it was. Dana Perkins did it, so it was a different engineering company somewhere along the line. Arnie's company bought it, and they've been working on it to get it up and running for the past 10 years, give or take, right? So this one is unique in that there was a handoff between the old regulations and the current regulations. Arnie's worked with planning staff and DPW to come up with a checklist of items that needs to be addressed prior to going to street acceptance. We've now completed all of the physical improvements that are on that checklist in the field. So all of that is done. Our crews were out there over the last two weeks, give or take, setting about 50 concrete bounds, so the bounds have now been placed. All the castings have been raised, and the finished course of pavement has also been placed. So we're actually out there today finishing our survey. I owe the town and Arnie an as-built. We're in the process of putting that together right now. We hope to have that complete first of next week, at which point we'll send it over to the town, DPW. This is not a surprise for DPW. They've been involved in the process in developing the list of items that need to be done. We also have an as-built from Dana Perkins, actually, in 2008, that all the utilities were done by a different company, and we have all that information, and it is in substantial compliance with the plan. So we don't see any issues with this, so we're looking for the same support for town meeting.
All right, just going the same way. Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Hanley, I received this notice today from planning and Alex regarding the outstanding and issues in the MOU between Fraser Lane and the town. Are we okay with that as far as written, as it's written?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Just to confirm with Alex, because we got a late, specifically about presenting and providing the as-built into the street acceptance plan now at this point.
Just so, you know, for everyone's benefit, the remaining items from the MOU that are, were listed as not completely resolved were 10, 11, 12, and 13. 10 being the as-bill, as Mr. Hanley indicated, and he'd indicated to me last week, that that, the ground survey was nearly complete, and that's going to go on paper, as he said, the first of next week, so that'll resolve that item. Item number 11 was the street acceptance plan and any easements, outstanding easements to be submitted to the town. So we have the street acceptance plan, it's a part of the warrant article, and I guess I'll also use this as an opportunity. I don't think there's any outstanding easements at this point, is that correct?
Yeah, right.
And then 12, the request for bond release would accompany the as-built, so that's really just paperwork. And then 13, submitting for street acceptance, which is what we're here for tonight. So once the as-built is submitted, then we're more or less complete.
So, Mr. Hanley, if we do the same thing here as far as the street acceptance, and then proceed with the as-bills, just as a time factor as well, I mean, it's been going on for a lot of years. I know the street came out great as well. I know a couple of people that live down there, and it's a beautiful street, probably one of the top streets in town. And to get them, again, you know, for the residents of Tewksbury, more than anybody, the fact that they can get street plowing and be a street-accepted, I think I would be in favor of that, and then the as-bills should hopefully be soon as well.
Yeah, you know, the challenge is timing a little bit, right? But where this is different is that we literally have a list of 13 items, and, you know, currently nine out of the 13 are done. We're working on the remaining ones.
Exactly, so I'm sure no one's going anywhere, you know. Because Mr. Martel is a local guy and not going anywhere, so we're willing to do the same thing as we did before, is accept the street and then hopefully have it resolved ASAP, so. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And number four, Mr. Hanley, the parking at the town sewer pump station, that's all completed?
Yeah, so 1 through 9 is all the physical, you know...
Okay, 1 through 9 is complete?
100% complete, all expected by the town, and they're, you know, happy with all the work that was done.
Okay. All right, so, and what are we thinking for a timeline, just to kind of get everything wrapped up? I mean, I know, obviously, town meeting is the...
I know, right, it's tight. So we've got a plan to get Alex the as-built for Monday of next week, that's our plan. That'll give them three weeks prior to, I think it's three weeks at that point prior to, so, yeah.
Okay. Does that work for you, Ms. Lazzari? Yeah? Okay. Well, with that, you know, with that understanding that you have those last remaining, couple of remaining items to take care of, and that they are already in process, I agree with Mr. Fratelli's assessment, and I'd be in favor of the street acceptance on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Similarly, no additional comments.
Mr. Lazzari?
Same, no additional comments.
I reiterate what I said before, so do we have a recommendation for Fraser Lane?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept the request for Fraser Lane acceptance, street acceptance.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great.
All right, that moves us to Agenda Item B6, which is Vale Street, multiple lots, approval not required plan. Do we have anybody here for Vale Street?
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants, here on behalf of CA Investment Trust. So we have a four-lot subdivision. It's actually, if you took a look at the submission materials, it's actually an old subdivision, which was called Tadmuck Circle. It was a fitting name, because it was in, really kind of designed the roadway right through the wetland area or the swamp. It was approved sometime, I believe it was in the 1970s, before the Wetlands, the River Wetlands Protection Act came to be. So it was a viable solution then, it's not a viable solution now. We've been working on this project for literally 18 months, give or take. The challenge with it is that Tadmuck Circle in the land associated with it was in land court. So instead of coming to you first for A&R plan, we need to go through the entire land court process to get the land taken out of land court. So that literally took about 16 months. So the way we approach this is that we approach conservation to make sure that the three lots that we're proposing to develop into single-family residential were reasonable from their perspective. We did that originally last spring. We were there last week. They asked that we come to you through the A&R process before they make a formal motion, hopefully, to approve it. So again, it's an 18-acre lot, we're cutting four lots off, we're proposing to build on three. We don't think the fourth lot is really going to be buildable, because we're taking advantage of the limited area you can build within a riverfront area on the three lots. All of the four lots comply with the underlying zoning, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Lazzari?
Yeah, so these, at least the three proposed lots at the front here, they're all dry and buildable.
Yeah, they're not all dry, right? There's wet areas, yeah, exactly, yeah. There's enough area to balance a reasonable-sized, single-family residential in each lot.
Okay. And then the one kind of stretching up to the north in the back, that's pretty much just a swamp?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, we would have to make direct wetland impacts to even try to do it. We have no intention at this point, if something changed in the future, regulations change, maybe there'd be something there, but under the current regs, we couldn't develop it.
Got other questions, do I have?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm in a little bit of a disadvantage. For some reason, I'm not on the internet tonight, despite multiple attempts.
Let me give you a second to look at that, though. Just start over here, that we have something...
Please, thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I'm looking at the map correctly here, Mr. Hanley, I'm looking at 68, 61, and 62. Are those the three lot numbers?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Tell me what the, the center lot, 61, says undeveloped to be eliminated. What is that, in Tadmuck Circle?
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to explain. So Tadmuck Circle and the lot lines associated with that roadway were approved before the Wetlands Protection Act. You really couldn't build it now, right? So, and because it was in land court, we had to go through that process, so what they require is you to show the original subdivision and denote that those lines will essentially be removed once we record this plan.
So initially, that was going to be in access to some of the...
Bingo, yeah.
Yeah, some of the...
Yeah, so I believe it was a six- or seven-lot subdivision when it was approved, and we're looking for three.
Okay, so this is Vale Street. Okay. And what's the status of the remainder of the land there?
We have no plan to build on it. From my opinion, I don't think we could build on it. There has been some discussion with conservation about either an open space or this or that. I think the applicant is considering that, but at this point, it's just a lot that we have no intention of building on.
Okay. Very good, good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Back to Mr. Chairman.
I have no questions or comments about the A&R.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I reviewed the conservation meeting you were at. I was actually there as well, and I know you had some resident concerns. You seemed to have them resolved and all that, so I think, I guess, again, you're just redrawing these lot lines to make your lots, you know, under the land court decision and so forth, and buildable, so with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Chair is all set as well. We have a recommendation on the endorsement of the A&R.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we endorse the approval-not-requiered plan for Vale Street as discussed.
Have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moves us on to Agenda Item C, 345 Main Street. Moves us on to agenda item C, 345 Main Street, uh, there's a signed special permit, do we have a motion to waive the public reading?
Don't move.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once you're settled, give your name.
Good evening, this is Mamet from Falcon Graphics, I present my customers, and then I'm the builders, and then installers, um, Domino's sign.
Okay.
And then, uh, yeah, we'd like to go a little bigger than the, what is by law saying, uh, because neighbors has, has, uh, even, our sign's big, but they, they have a bigger signs over there, uh, if it's okay by law, we'd like to go whatever presented on our papers, and then, all information over there, if you have any question, uh, I can be read the answers.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll stop, Mr. Duffy.
Hey, uh, I see in, in, um, kind of item C, how it looks at, this is 345 Main Street, but then it shows, I reviewed the submission for 1830.
That was typo.
There's a scrivener's error in my memo to the board, apologies, this is for 345 Main Street, yes.
Okay, okay, just checking. So my understanding is, um, that the sign will be increasing a very small amount, right? Four feet?
A little bit, yes.
Nine square feet?
Nine.
Nine square feet?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that's kind of, to, to keep it in keeping with the other signs on the other, on the other retailers, uh...
Definitely.
In the area there?
Definitely, sir.
Okay, because I, we, we, I don't see a, um, oh, I don't have a picture of the sign in my chat, apparently, can I get more of that picture? Oh, you high-tech guys. I know, yeah, well, high-tech is not...
Exactly.
Thank you, Vinnie.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think that that, that increase is very reasonable, and, uh, I think it's in keeping with the, with the, with the surrounding, uh, and I think actually, a smaller sign would probably look not as good as the one that's, that's in keeping with the rest of the sign sizes there, so I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Mr. Champ?
I just have one question, I mean, in looking at the signs and trying to get a sense of this sign, and how many windows it's going across, and how much of the height of the building, did all of the previous signs in this same development get waivers to go bigger?
So, those signs were all approved under an old bylaw that allowed for larger wall signs, so this development was originally permitted in 2005, I believe, um, and that was a couple of bylaw additions ago, so, the original signage from that development was allowed to be larger, um, so as, as noted, um, by Mr. Duffy, the increase from today's standard would be about approximately nine square feet, uh, but it would have been allowed under an old bylaw.
Right, so, the question that leads me to is, we've decided that we want our signs to be smaller, and at some point, every, you know, over hopefully many, many, many years, every business in this development will turn over and want to do a new sign. Are we grandfathering in the whole development, or are we going to basically have them conform as they turn over, meaning they're not being grandfathered in?
I, I mean, that's the discretion of the board, and I think that there's, it's really, you know, depending on what you folks want to do, there's also something speaking to uniformity when it comes to zoning, where if you like the look of it right now, then you would want to maintain the, that size of that sign, otherwise you're going to start having off and on some larger, some smaller, so that's going to be the discretion of this board, whether you want to keep the sign size that exists today, or start phasing them to be smaller.
Okay, I don't necessarily have an answer, but that's, that's the question, I think, as far as, uh, you know, we haven't gone through to every business and demanded bike racks, but if one business is going in, like, some of the marijuana retailers have asked, they're going in and existing developments, and while their neighbors don't have it, we're asking them to provide it, so, um, I guess that's the question that I'm, that I'm wrestling with, is, do we move towards our new established bylaw, which was voted in, which as I understand is really hard to do, um, or is that only going to apply to new businesses or standalone businesses, and I, it's not an easy question, um, but I think that's, that's kind of the sticking point of all of this. Um, and then, the only other comment I would say is, one of the things that I, I do like to see is, the conformed look, what would it look like if it was in conformance, how would you do that sign, because you might not just shrink the whole thing, you might cut it one way or another to make it conform, uh, and then my other question, and then have that, so we can look at it side by side, because then we can see whether it looks good or not, when it conforms, and, you know, how it looks now. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just make a comment down there, because that's a very fair question, Mr. Champ, and, um, my, what, what just popped into my head is that, um, that, that, A, I think they should be case by case, um, but B, I think that the presumption should be that the sign allowances, um, were, um, met the zoning rule, uh, sign law at the time they were all built, you know, so to go back to existing, pre-existing structures and ask them to, um, uh, you know, downsize their sign, because there's new zoning on a, on a, on a project that's already, you know, long off the table of the planning board, that's, that, that, that would be a good topic for discussion, I think, at some point down the road.
Yeah.
No time like the present.
Mr. Lozardi?
Um, hey, I, I tend to think it does fit in, kind of with the character of, of that lot there, um, and it looks like the sign you're proposing is of similar size to the, you know, the planning on replacing, um, but I think it makes sense to, uh, to go with the waiver here. I think I just had one, one question from my side, uh, we had mentioned something about hours of operation, uh, kind of when it would be lit versus when it wouldn't be lit, do you know?
I think they are open there possibly, what I would, by law saying, you know, they can turn off by time, you know?
Do all those, you know, the lights in those plaza, do they all go off at the same time, or they kind of, business by business, as they have different hours?
Some businesses closing early possibly, but, uh, uh, yes, Domino's, other cities saying until 10, because, uh, a bunch of, uh, houses are on, they don't want to bother, possibly 10 o'clock is a good time, but whatever you guys decide, and we can go ahead.
Okay, I think if I, if I was reading it correctly, it sounds like 12 PM to 6 AM is kind of, or 12 AM to 6 AM, it's kind of the time that we, uh, we like to see them off, yeah, if you're not...
The only recommendation I would make for that is that we just, whatever they get for their, they're okay, that, that's what it mirrors, uh, because I have a feeling it is possible that they may even be doing later than 10 o'clock for deliveries, because that's what some of them do, so rather than lock them into that and then just make you have to come back, and just as soon as, if your opening hours are allowed to be till midnight, then we'll make it midnight, because that matches what's there at Walmart anyways, they only take advantage of it usually in the holiday season, but they're allowed to be open longer than is normal, it's, you know, it's already built in to allow that, so, that would be my recommendation for that. All said and done, Wes?
Yes, no other questions.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't have a problem with the sign, uh, you will need a waiver for that additional signage size you're proposing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and, uh, to your point, Mr. Champ, I, I wouldn't want to put any undue expenses on businesses as far as making them conform to the size now, I mean, business is hard enough these days for people too, but, uh, I mean, so for you to go with that sign, that's consistent with other ones, and then in the plaza, I have no problem with that, and I'd be wanting to vote for your sign, so, all set.
So, just so, you know, so, and I think we've sort of hit on them here, but everyone sees that to make this decision, you see the section 6.2.2D, A, B, C, D, and E, so I do believe we sort of hit on all of these, for any that missed, I think I may take care of that here, um, I mean, we're talking about signs that exist on the rest of the complex that are like this, so this isn't, you know, just a whim decision that doesn't fit with the area and have, you know, a basis in making it, um, you know, so I think that, that handles your, uh, your, uh, unique, unique to the property, because that's exactly what it is, that property was approved, and all those signs came in under a different rule, so that's why they're uniform across, but not uniform with the new rule. Um, you know, I, I can't see how we'd be contrary to the purpose or intent, because, again, if they weren't going to put the ability for us to do that in here, then we can't possibly be working in contrary to the intent, because the intent allowed us to do it, so that takes care of that. Architecture of the building, I think it's covered by what I already said, um, it's not just allowing a si, larger sign for the sake of a larger sign, um, as far as E, I would say that I would think it'd be unreasonable to ask you to be the only one on the building with a smaller sign, so I think I've got A through E done. Um, to the bigger question of this, you know, kind of thing, if it happens, you know, as we go forward, and this has sort of been my feeling on this, and we may have this conversation later on something else, but if the bylaw allows us to make a decision, or to grant, you know, this kind of not having to be, but how does this word, this is strict adherence, that, you know, we're not asking for strict adherence here, then I think then that becomes something that it's okay for us to do, if that's what we decide. I, I, if, if we wanted something to be absolute, then we wouldn't have or shouldn't have the ability to render a decision different than that, so I don't have a problem with those kind of things, as long as we have a reasonable reason for doing it, and, you know, it works within, you know, the power we've been given, um, that's why I, you know, I'm typically against absolutes, and, you know, in this case, there is a way for us to grant relief that fits with what we're looking at here, we've got a shopping center that's been existence for, I don't know, 20 years?
Yes.
Yeah, 20 years, I've never heard a complaint about the signage there, the longest conversation I think we've ever had about a sign, sign there is about Walmart, when for reasons passing understanding, we tried to talk to, in Walmart, into changing their nationwide sign, but other than that, there's no, you know, and these also face in, towards the parking lot, the majority of them, there's only two, not counting the urgent care, three, maybe signs that even face the street, so you're talking about anything that you're looking at, it's kind of internal, it's sort of unfortunate for, for the businesses in there, that they are sort of turned that way, it's hard to see their signs, but all the more reason not to make them smaller, um, it, you know, they're already in sort of a, a little bit of a disadvantage with that angle that they sit on, so, for all those reasons, I have no issue with this, the one thing I do, uh, want, and this is not part of the sign thing, but it's part of the property, now that you're going to have Domino's in there, going in and out for deliveries and whatnot, I think we need to send a letter to them to repaint, re-something that section that says it's out only when you first come in, that people sometimes use as a left to go in there, because it's not supposed to be, it's an out-only.
Yeah, that first term is do not enter.
And people take it, if we have delivery cars going in and out of there now, constantly, that's going to be a problem, if people don't accept that that is not where they're supposed to turn in, that they're supposed to go further down and loop through, and I think, much like, you know, we've done with a couple other places, I think this is the time to remind them to maybe remark that and whatnot, because you get the holidays, you know, the ground can be hot enough to see sometimes, that, you know, we're going to have a problem if people start whipping leps in there as delivery cars are...
Sure, so, they currently have a building permit pending, uh, an application pending with the building department, so I can make that recommendation to our new commissioner, and have him make sure that he takes a look at that.
Okay, excellent, all right, so with that, I'll open up the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board, but it's the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Do I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the signed special permit?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the signed special permit.
So, it's, it's more of a ruling by us that we're not requiring strict adherence, is correct?
The conditions of the special permit is that you're allowing, um, exactly not to...
It's not a waiver, as waivers typically are, that's why I...
Yes, so it's, it's not a waiver, it's a special permit, and the special permit covers the excessive size.
Our motion purposes is having found sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of section 6.2.2.2D, A, B, C, D, E, as stated this evening, um, you know, the, the board is granting the signed special permit and allowing the, um, strict, uh, waiving the strict adherence, and for those reasons, does that sound right?
Yep.
All right?
That's right.
Excellent, that was a weird one, so I wanted to help out a little. Uh, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All set.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item D, agenda item D is requested to be continued to our 9:25 meeting, and we have them, this is Shawsh, 1600 Shawshin Street 1, we have them penciled in for 7:15, so can I have a motion to continue to 7:15?
Don't move.
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, agenda item E, 1600 Shawshin Street 2, uh, that we have for 7:20, so can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item F, which is 1879 Main Street, they have also requested that we continue to our 9:25 meeting, and we have them penciled in for 7:30, can I have a motion to continue to 7:30 on 9:25?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item G, 1830 Main Street, met, uh, the signed special permit continued from our 8:21 meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that you opened or waived the reading at the last meeting for this one.
No? Okay, so can I have a motion to waive the public reading?
Don't move.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Good evening, John Peterson, here on behalf of Metro Sign and Honning, uh, we're here for property at 1830 Main Street, Tewksbury Sports Club, uh, we're just looking to replace a current pylon sign that they have, and, um, add a digital message board to it, uh, be three feet by six feet, and then an additional cabinet there for the other tenants within the building, from the property. Uh, they currently have a pylon sign where it is on the property, um, it's kind of more closer to that gas station, I guess he's received some complaints about people missing out on that driveway, and they're trying to get in there, so he just kind of wants to move it closer to the, the entrance of the property there. And as far as, I was told, these anchor tenants that are on there, the tenants, they're only going to be for the actual Tewksbury Sports Club building, not the building out front, because that's a different owner over there.
So, I mean, just for clarification, so the building out in front's not part of this, do they have a sign out front, or are there just the ones on the building?
No, those are all just wall signs.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, I'm sorry, continue.
That's all I got for now, if you guys have any questions?
All right, we'll start with, um, Mr. Champ.
Okay, just running through, um, and, and I would just like to make note, I'm pretty familiar with the area, not only because of Starbucks, but I also, I'm a member of this, Jim, um, and one of the things that I wanted to, to evaluate was the size of the existing sign, and try to do a comparison to the size of the new sign, they seem pretty similar, it doesn't seem like we're doing anything bigger, it is an electronic message board, LED-style sign with picture and color and all that, um, so, I would assume that some of these waiver or, or exemptions that they're looking for were already exempted in the previous, um, iteration, so, I mean, I agree that it's nowhere near the driveway, and now that there's about four or five driveways, all in a very short span, it might be nice to get the sign to where it is before you're having to turn around and obesion, um, that makes sense, I mean, honestly, even myself now, I'm still not entirely sure if I'm getting in the right left-turn-only lane, and I go there, you know, let's, let's not talk about how often I go there, not as often as I should. Not as often as I should. But anyway, so to me, in my mind, this seems pretty much like it's a one for one. Again, I will reiterate that one of the things I would like to see more often is if you had to conform to the bylaw, what would the sign look like? And then what would you like it to be? And then we can evaluate the two. But where we don't have that in this case, I'm going to revert to my, it seems like we're just making the one for one swap and putting it in a better location. I, I can't see that as anything other than an improvement. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Lozotti?
Um, yeah, kind of, kind of similar. Um, again, it seems like you're moving the existing sign into a new location. There's already waivers for it. It's more or less identical. I've been kind of staring at this for a little while now, and I can't tell the difference between the two right now.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, I mean, from that perspective, uh, as long as we are moving it and the old one is coming down, I have, I have no objections. So no further questions either.
Mr. Fitzhale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Peterson, the sign that we see here when this proposed, um, tenant two, three, four, five, six, seven, is, I'm not going to be, have any signs there at all?
No, they will. The tenants that are currently in that building, they'll go in there.
Okay.
They, they just, you know, I think they have, I don't know if there's a high turnover there or anything. I think they just...
Okay. So what you have here is what we're going to see on the new sign.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I don't have a problem with the, I know it's what, 12 square feet?
I'm not sure. Will each have to get a signed permit for those each panel?
So that'll be a part of your eventual building permit. And then as there's any turnover, that would be a one-to-one replacement, considered a regular part of maintenance. And actually, uh, if you'll allow me just to speak to Mr. Champa's comments, I did some research into the original, um, the original sign. That's the one that's kind of hidden in the background there. The original sign was 58 square feet and did receive a signed special permit because it did include the electronic message sign. This one is approximately 62 square feet, and some of the major differences in those two signs are that there is now a bit of an outline around the Tucksbury Sports Club logo, whereas in the old one, it was really tight and didn't include a lot of extra square footage, and the addition of the street address right underneath the Tucksbury Sports Club logo, which did not exist in the previous one, which can help account for the more or less four square feet that they're talking about increasing from the existing sign.
Yeah. So with that said, I don't have a problem with the increased square footage it's looking for. I probably using 12 square feet here myself, just for my paperwork. So, uh, it's not a big issue for me. Sign looks great. I think it'll be an improvement to the, um, to the Main Street. So with that, I'm all set.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Jeffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it just basically looks, uh, other than an increase of above four square feet, but you know what? You are adding the address bar, which, which is very helpful, I think, for, for, you know, you know, responding, you know, fire apparatus, ambulances and so on and so forth. So, um, and that helps to meet the current, um, zoning criteria. So I think that's helpful. You're only talking a few square feet. You're going to build a new one and then demo the old one? Is that kind of the...
Yeah, we usually take it and dispose of it right in our facility here in Tucksbury.
And tie back all the electrical and how does it work?
Yeah, we don't, um, you know, an electrician will come in, they'll, the property owner will be responsible for that. We'll come in and set it all up.
I'm just curious, since that's way out of our purview, but I was just curious about that. But I don't have any problem at all. It looks like an hour, an hour of move and replace. Uh, I'm okay with it, and I think it's a good, um, improvement there.
All right. So as we've had many times, I'm the most likely to be okay with these things as anybody up here. So, um, the only thing, you know, uh, I don't know if you have a comparison because I'm not sure exactly on, you know, but it, with this, uh, the resolution and everything on this sign, is there a comparable in town?
Um, I would, I'm trying to think of one up and down the strip here. I would think maybe, um, Dick Insurance, visibility, kind of like that.
For, for a message sign?
Yeah, the, yeah, like that.
How about East Street? The new sign on East Street. That's similar?
I think it will be a little clearer than that one because it's a little bigger.
And that's my point. So this, this is what I was getting, because what I want to do and what I've asked that we put in each time is that it'll be maintained at the level of, um, clarity and, you know, whatnot as it was submitted. Because what I don't want is, you know, something happens and then it gets replaced with a, you know, a less, a lesser sign.
Yeah.
And then that, that doesn't look good.
Okay.
Um, I mean, if we're going to approve these, I'd want them to, to maintain a, you know, the look that they're being brought in with, because otherwise, what's the point? We could have the old signs there and, you know, lights are out and bulbs are out, you know, that kind of thing. Um, so that's something, you know, that I want to make sure is, you know, put in there and that it'll be maintained, you know, in perpetuity at, you know, no less than the level as submitted.
Okay.
For clarity and whatnot. The other ones that we, we've asked before is that, you know, they agree that in the event that there's any emergency messages that need to be displayed from the town, that you'll agree that, you know, you'll participate in that. Um, and I think, is there any other conditions that we typically make that I'm forgetting?
Um, no, just the ones that are included in other ones where they have to get the electric, uh, electrician has to pull a permit to be able to do all the wiring, and that the sign is only to be illuminated when the business is open, and, um, that there do have to be express granting of waivers to allow the electronic message sign in a parcel that has less than 10 acres, and to allow for full color rather than amber writing with black background.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to point out that, um, in terms of section 6.2.7.2.1, this business is operational, but prior to 6:00 AM in the morning, they open at 4:00 on weekday mornings. Um, just want to make everyone aware that they, this sign would probably be operational. There is some housing in behind that I think wouldn't, maybe the upper apartments might see the sign that early. Um, but across the street on Route 38, there's no other housing in the area.
So, but, so it's a recommendation then that we include in the waiver the ability to, to illuminate it during business hours? Okay. Okay. All right. All right. I'm all set otherwise. So with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
The motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the waivers as requested, we have a motion on the waivers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, do we have to do these one at a time? No. To approve the, um, signed special permit with the waivers listed for, um, items two, three, four, five, six, and seven in the memo.
Okay. All right. And I'll just read them off real quick, just so that they pick them up on things. So you've got section 6.2.2B, section 6.2.7, 2.2.7. C.1, 6.2.7. C.4. A, 6.2.7. C.4. B, 6.2.7. C.4. H, and 6.2.10. D.4. Just so it's on the record. All right. So we have the motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the signed special permit. Good motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the signed special permit.
All right. Uh, including the conditions, uh, mentioned earlier. So we have a motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Okay. So that moves us on to agenda item H, 592 Main Street, site plan review, special permit continued from our 8:21 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I got two here, I think. Yeah? Oh, cool. I got it. Okay. All right. Once you guys have settled, your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Kevin Fleming, Cypress Design.
Mark Shea.
Floor is yours, Joe.
Okay. So, um, based on the previous, uh, public hearing and the comments came out, we went with that one-way coming in from Main Street and, uh, exiting on Old Boston Road. And, you know, added all the signage, appropriate signage for the one-ways and do not enters and whatnot. Unfortunately, we weren't able to, because of the site, how it's set up, we weren't able to, um, reduce the pavement because of, by the time you, you put the angled parking in, it's, it, this just, it makes it worse, actually, believe it or not. Strange, but, um, also, um, we have comments from Friday. I believe we had a couple, um, reviews, letters from the planning and engineering. These plans have been pretty much updated based on those comments. Um, what needs to be done now is just the hydrology calculations need to be updated and submitted to the engineer and approved by them. Um, I can run through the comments or...
Sure.
Okay. All right. So we talked about the one-way, um, off of Main and out of, uh, Old Boston Road. Uh, the sidewalks are five feet on-site, um, and they do meet, uh, the ADA requirements. There's no curbing and no ramps needed for that. The reserved spaces, we added four reserved spaces. They're very hard to see on these small plans here. But if we do add those reserved spaces in there, we're going to need to get a five-foot waiver from the right-of-way because it's such a, it's just such a tight site. And commercial waste removal plan, we're not quite sure about that.
We have a dumpster at our other location in Methuen, so anything that we need to throw away, we can throw away there. So...
Commercial, the commercial.
Um, there's only supposedly one driveway per site, and we talked about this in, in the previous hearing. They're supposed to be 200 feet apart. We don't have that, but that is just the loading area. I know engineering did mention that they don't support the waiver. So it's up to the board and I guess which way you want to go with that. The sidewalks, we do have, uh, the sidewalk along Main Street, uh, with the vertical granite curbing is required. Um, we have been working with Mass Highway on the, um, curb, curb cut, um, permit. So that's moving right along. And, um, let's see, wait a minute. We are going to ask to waive the sidewalk for Old Boston Road. There's no sidewalks on either side of that road all the way down. So we're going to ask engineering if we can waive just Old Boston Road. Um, let's see what they say on that one. So the response letters are going to be, uh, the plans have been updated for the most part based on the comments, and, um, again, we did, there's a few things we need to do is, is the hydrology calculations, um, and then the response letter to planning and engineering. Uh, driveways should be 50 feet from intersection. Old Boston Road is about 170 feet from the intersection, and I'm assuming that means on Old Boston Road, Main Street intersection. And then, uh, 110 feet on Main Street. Uh, snow storage, uh, there was a comment, and we got to, uh, making sure that was adequate. So we did add additional snow storage on the plans, um, which is about 1,200 square feet total for the snow storage areas that we have now. Based on some of the drainage comments that engineering had, uh, the, what we propose to do is take the entire parking area and make that porous pavement instead of just the section. That allows us to eliminate the infiltrators for the roof runoff, and it will meet all the TSS requirements and water quality requirements that way. Also, the comment was to, uh, regrade the site so that, uh, no water comes off the site onto public ways or public roads, and that, that's been done. We have that on the plan. Um, it's all self-contained. And, uh, fire truck turnaround, we do have a, a little detail that shows, um, to scale what, um, you know, the curve radius for the fire trucks, which shouldn't have any We have to add a site distance to the plan. That's not going to be a problem. Uh, that's pretty much it.
All right. So what's up, Mr. Fitzhale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's obviously moving forward with the, with the engineering department and DPW and so forth, which is great. They're sticklers for some of this stuff, so just so you're aware of that, you know? I understand about the sidewalk on Old Boston Road, um, then that may be an issue with you guys going forward because of the regulations, so, um, but I don't have a problem with the dumpster question you had about having it on-site. You, you're making the dumpster available at your Methuen site, which is awesome. And no need, I don't have a problem with your parking as well. Like I said, I'm glad you're staying in Tucksbury or staying here, so, but, uh, so with that, I'm all set. And do you think you'll be able to get these issues resolved by our next meeting? So we can approve this?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, yes.
So we're going to need this, we can't approve it until we get some of these things resolved with DPW and engineering.
Okay. Yep.
You're making progress, so that's great.
Mm-huh.
Good. All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Lozotti?
Um, yeah, not a whole lot of comments. I do tend to think with the sidewalk against Old Boston Road, um, I mean, I think we have to start somewhere with these sidewalks, so I would prefer to, you know, see that as part of the plans. Um, yeah, aside of that, this looks like a, you know, big improvement over what's there now. Uh, so happy to see that these designs are coming along. No further comments.
Mr. Champ?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, there are some sites that just can't have a whole lot done with them, and I think you're making a really strong effort here to, I mean, especially looking at some of these architecturals, um, to really make something nice out of an area that, you know, not a lot of people would probably choose this one particular one to, um, start their new, or move their business to and try to redevelop. So, you know, we, we do have some, um, you have some obstructions that are just impossible to overcome, but I am of the mind that the overall project is going to do, uh, is going to be a major improvement. And in order to take those steps forward, um, I mean, the site probably never would have passed compliance when it was first built. So, you know, you're moving it closer than, than where it is. And I think we had similar issues with Sal's Pizza, uh, that particular site. So, you know, that being said, um, I, I think you have to, um, work with engineering, get their concerns done. If you're dead-set against doing the sidewalk, they can do a calculation, um, and there can be a monetary offset for the sidewalk fund. So, you know, if you're, if you're going to push to not do them on Boston Road, I'd at least like to see what the, the financial offset would be. If it's not too burdensome, you know, it, it definitely helps because maybe we don't want to start the sidewalk here, but some other part of Boston Road might want it. I know we've heard in the past about people walking up and down Boston Road, very concerned about the traffic and the trucks and whatnot. So, like Mr. Lozada said, I think it's an area that could probably use some attention when it comes to the sidewalks. Other than that, I have no further comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is, what is your expected response from DPW regarding the, I know you're looking for a waiver for the entrance to the loading area?
Mm-hmm.
Have you had any conversation on that or?
We've, I mean, we have not, besides discussing it at the first meeting with the board, so I, I could talk with them and see, you know, what the options are, if there are any options, but it's.
You know, it seems to me that that makes a lot of sense to have an, an entrance to, to a loading area there that's, that just might, might take on it for, from a, from a very funky shaped lot, you know, to try to operate a business out of there and to try to, you know, try to meet all of the, a lot of requirements in a very, very small space.
Right.
And I see that they have an issue with the, with the previous pavement as well. So does that need to have a, do you have to have it like a vacuum truck come in every year or, like, how, what is the maintenance on that and are they interested in, in, in that? Because obviously they're concerned that, you know, part of that pavement is used for drainage.
Right, correct. Yeah, there is a maintenance schedule that's, that is part of the report.
Okay.
That has everything and, and it basically, it's, it's a vacu, it's, it's almost, it's just a vacuum.
It's a vacuum, yeah.
They just, you know, just keep the porous pavement, yeah.
It just cleans up the sediment out of the pores, basically, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not rocket science, but, you know, it is in there, it's gonna, and it is gonna be recorded at the registry deeds with the approvals, so. And, you know, it's pretty straightforward as far as I see it. I mean, it's a, it's a green option for drainage. I don't know why it's not used more, gotta be honest.
Okay. Would you be, oh, I'm sorry, money. Rorous pavement is a lot more expensive than regular pavement.
Well, that, that is true, but if you don't have to have the structures put in and installed in and, and it, it's a wash, you know what I mean? And it's just, it's a, it's a much better product. It's just in my.
It just needs maintenance where, where some of the other stuff, of course, even the pits need maintenance too.
Right.
Probably so.
Right.
Yeah. I, would you be open to, if, if that entrance, second entrance was gated maybe, would they, would they be open to, to allow on that?
Discuss that with them.
Possibly, it would.
Because I see they're not supporting it, the way.
Yeah, which is tough because we're trying to make it nicer to the eye from Main Street, and we're trying to keep those garage doors obviously off Main Street.
Sure.
So we need that loading dock somewhere.
Listen, I'm, I'm with you.
You know, so I'm not really sure why they're too concerned. Almost every entranceway on Main Street has two driveways within 200 yards, so I, I don't see that we're asking for too much, so.
Now, does that waiver come from us?
Yes.
It does? Okay. All right. I know you're working on where you're gonna, what you're gonna do for your snow storage and so on and so forth, so, so, and work that plan out. As Mr. Champ mentioned, you just may want to get a, a dollar amount if you're looking for a waiver from DPW on, on sidewalks. Sometimes that's, in those instances, you know, where it just doesn't make a lot of sense to put a little strip of sidewalk in there, that might be, and you're already putting one along Main Street, right?
Yeah.
To get it so that that project continues. So I, I am definitely seeing a lot of progress here. I, I, I don't want to see you hitting any stone walls in your, in your process, and so far, so good from my perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Lozada, do you have something you want to say?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to elaborate more on the no driveways within 200 feet of each other, so as Mr. Shea noted, there are several properties on Main Street that do have that pre-existing non-conforming. And the other item is that when engineering is reviewing these plans, the idea is to have the least amount of curb cuts possible to, to decrease the number of vehicles that can leave the same site possibly at the same time. The more curb cuts, the more opportunities for vehicles to maybe turn in by accident or turn in on purpose, and you're just increasing the number of vehicles that could be having similar motions closer together at the same time, therefore increasing possible traffic accidents. So that's kind of the, the thought behind not wanting to locate driveways so close to each other. However, they are recommending against under that principle, but ultimately discretion does lie with the board. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, and, and, you know, I understand, maybe we could get, could ask just for, you know, is this just their, their response as a general, because that's, they don't want it, so they just said no. In the event that the board were leaning towards granting the waiver despite their request that we not, let's ask them if there's anything that they would rec, or suggest that we ask, you know, signage or something to, you know, to alleviate some of their concerns, but still allow the petitioner to be able to do what they want to do. And I say that partly because, you know, without polling everybody else, I'm, I'm more apt to be okay with this because, you know, as Mr. Chair pointed out, the oddity of this lot, but we've already asked them to do one way in, one way out, to help alleviate those cars going and, you know, whatnot, for one. But two, if, if you, if you have to do the deliveries out the front, I mean, we're talking about some fairly heavy items that are being moved, and we're already talking about a really tight space for cars to come in and out of there as it is, now you've got deliveries in the way, you know? I mean, I'm sure you can try to come up with some kind of delivery schedule where you try to avoid that, but still, it, it's just clogging, you know, it's clogging up an already, you know, somewhat small area. And, you know, part of what I think we like about this is that this is not a heavily trafficked, you know, use in a weird lot. I mean, it's kind of, you know, an ideal use. I don't want to make the world more difficult when we're kind of getting a benefit out of this at the same time. And as the petitioner pointed out, and actually Mr. Champ as well, and, you know, we've got, we've asked them to make some design changes to make this look, you know, nicer, you know, because it's such a visible spot. You know, we pull the loading dock around to the front, now that's what you're staring at coming down 38. It sort of detracts and takes away from everything we've asked. It doesn't make a lot of sense. Old Boston Road isn't the busiest of, you know, roads, it's, you know what I mean? We're not talking about, you know, East Street or something like that. So, I mean, if there are some potential, like I said, signage or, you know, whatever that could help alleviate some of their concerns, you know, ask them to let us know, you know, and then if not, we're just gonna go about whatever we're gonna do anyways. But if they have some suggestions, I'm happy to consider them. As far as the sidewalk, if I refresh my memory, the, the dentist is across the street, right? Did we have one of the sidewalks of the dentist?
I would have to look into that. That's an older project, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so. Because it was kind of a, if they were there, they'd be those sidewalks to no place from right now.
Yeah. Just like a little bumpo of the pavement, but it's not a, it's definitely not a concrete sidewalk, for sure.
I think we've got a fee in lieu of, I think.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, yes, and that's probably what it is, but then that's your, you know, those are really your alternatives are you pay whatever they tell us the number is into the fee, and then we figure out where we can apply that money, whether it's Old Boston Road or somewhere else, or you do the sidewalks. I mean, that, you know, there really isn't an option for us to just say, no, never mind, right? Not with these, not like that, not in the area. You know, that's kind of more of a, you know, subdivision kind of thing that we work one side, not the other kind of things that makes sense, but, you know, to be consistent with everybody else, I think it's gonna have to go one way or the other. So you guys just figure out your numbers, what makes the most sense. That may also be something that helps alleviate some of DPW's concern about that other driveway. I don't know, just because then you got people who have a place to stand because they're on the sidewalk and not, you know, wherever with, you know, trucks trying to get in and out of that back delivery area. I don't know, like I said, but, you know, like I said, you're really gonna have one, one of two options for that, so. No, I, I mean, for that sidewalk and that side, we talking, does this go like point to point? Does that go all the way out to that curve?
The sidewalk?
Yeah.
It would go around the, the way the bylaw reads, it would have to go along the entire frontage of the property, both frontages. And I do want to note that when the DPW calculates the fee-in lieu of calculation, they're doing it based on if the town were to construct the sidewalk, so that includes prevailing wages and things like that. So if you were to get the figure, it's most likely going to be more expensive than if you were to construct them on your own.
Now, I don't know any of this, this is my first time ever trying to build something, but the sidewalk on Old Boston, I live right up the street from here, it would just be in front of my, back, back of my building and that's all. Because there's no other sidewalk on Old Boston.
Just to Lozada's point though, though, but the, the intention is, you know, that we've been trying to do sidewalks all around town.
Yeah.
And they sort of need to start somewhere in some places, and being that this is the corner, that, you know.
All, all I'm ask, all I'm kind of questioning is, there's one building next to me, and then after that, that, all that land is dead, correct?
Yeah.
That's all wetland.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, and I, I think he deserves some consideration from DPW and, and others, in, in the simple fact that he has two frontages, and it's, it's a very.
We can't, we can't weave it in.
The planning board does not have discretion to do that, but I would recommend that you, you know, take these arguments and make them to the town engineer in your next revision and.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we used to be able to do, but not, we just can't do that, so it's not fully for us.
All I'm thinking is, that walkway can, has to end because it can't go further down where the, what is it, gas company or electric company is?
Yeah, but I mean, even like Main Street, I mean, we've got it where Main Street goes to a certain point and then you gotta cross over.
Yeah.
I mean, so it could be that kind of thing, it might be.
But it's, it's both sides of the street, is it not?
Yeah. The dentist on the other side, so I mean.
No, I'm just saying, further down, it would just be my sidewalk and then no one else.
Sounds like an excellent argument to make to DPW.
Okay.
Nobody walks that, nobody walks that Old Boston Road. There's no residences down there, it's all commercial and industrial down there, so I mean, minimal, minimal walking at all. I don't see anybody walking down there when I.
But like I said, whatever you, whatever you come up with out of this, it's gonna have to be between you guys and them.
Go with them.
Only because we just don't have a way to.
Okay.
To deal with this.
Nope, that's fine then.
All right? So otherwise, I am all set. Obviously, you've got some stuff you still need to work out with them, so open up the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this. Seeing none. Seven, what?
Thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five. Oh, yeah, that's right, we didn't use that yet. So we have a motion to continue this hearing until seven thirty-five on nine twenty-five. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You guys next up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
So, we have a seven thirty-five or? No, that was, you know what? It was already penciled in, it's eighteen seventy-eight, that I thought that we're gonna have to move it, but that was already in there. All right, so that brings us to correspondence, I'm sorry, I gotta continue, I. Agenda item I, fourteen thirty-eight Main Street, they are to be continued to our next meeting. We have them penciled in for seven twenty-five, so can I have a motion to continue to seven twenty-five?
So moved.
The motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that brings us to correspondence. So we have correspondence here. Oh, it's Mr. Duffy. So everybody saw this already. Did you want to discuss this this evening?
I was thinking.
Okay.
If you guys don't mind. I guess I would just like to read this for the record. If, is that okay or? Okay. To my planning board colleagues, I would, I would just like to make a short presentation for your consideration regarding a decision the board made at our last meeting. The majority of the board approved the replacement of cement concrete sidewalk material that was approved, previously approved on a previous site plan review with bituminous concrete material for the sidewalk in front of the applicant's property. DPW is currently responsible for the approval specification of sidewalks in town, and they have the appropriate expertise for sidewalk specs. I feel we should have deferred to their recommendation for cement concrete sidewalks in this case. None of us on the board are engineers, there are many different mixes of bituminous concrete. We made this approval without any specification on base material, soil compaction, bituminous mixture specifications. We can only hope now that the applicant will properly install the sidewalks. Secondly, the applicant asked for relief in this matter stating a substantial financial hardship regarding the cost difference between the cement concrete and bituminous concrete sidewalk material, yet they did not provide any documentation such as cost of cements for the work. I do not believe that the cost difference was as substantial as was stated. I am not averse to providing relief if appropriate for a small business, however, it may have been better if the applicant provided backup for such relief. This may have been a one-off situation, but I think we owe the residents a high degree of diligence in these types of matters. I am hopeful that in the future we can expect the applicants to provide reasonable documentation to assist us in making these types of decisions. Respectfully, Jim Duffy.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody have any comment?
My only comment, Mr. Chairman, is I'm fine with my decision to okay the sidewalk. I know that they'll do the, the right job. They've been in town for many years, I'm glad we kept American gutter there. Basically, they're gonna put an inch and a half binder down and a one-inch top coat like the town does, so I don't have a problem with what's going there. And I, and like I said, I'm okay with my decision. We reviewed it before, and unfortunately, I think it was a typo more than anything, and we use that same con, that same material on, in sidewalks, in subdivisions and everywhere else, so I don't have a problem with the non-putting in con, bituminous concrete sidewalks. Maybe we should make a, make a point when we do these plans and so forth that we make sure it's concrete sidewalks, so that clarifies any mis, misinterpretation of what should have been there, so. I think that, I don't want to do any undue, any undue expense to a business that's staying in town, and with that said, I, I'm fine with how I voted on that particular sidewalk concern myself.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that, you know, and I think my comment before was, you know, that, that they were trying to squeeze through the definitions of various types of concrete and whatnot. I think first off that, you know, our own DPW, if, you know, they're aware that we have bituminous and cement concrete, if they're going to be requiring one or the other that they specifically want, that through the review, they should have it identified as such on the plan. That's one opportunity to not have this sort of an issue in the future. And I think we kind of have to take the default position that, you know, if, if you are specifying something and there's multiple options, that, that's, you know, that basically is open, I think, mostly to the interpretation of the developer, because I do know that they jump through a lot of hoops and bend over backwards to get through IDR. And so, that being said, I feel like they, they, you know, it's not like they don't suffer burdens in bringing these projects to life. The, the main thing for me was, I felt that in this case, the bituminous concrete was more in keeping with the other concrete along that stretch of road. There wasn't a lot of cement concrete in those areas. And I mean, going all the way to the library, we have, you know, basically just asphalt over tree roots, and it's not in the best of shape, but that's what it is, so. I think that's, that's where we do something similar to what we did with the sign, is we look at what's in the area. I can assure you, if there had been even some connected cement concrete sidewalks, I would have ruled in favor of them extending cement concrete, but where most of the other sidewalks in the area from East Street, well, Shawshank Street to Chandler were already bituminous, I felt it was a fair, a fair request that they just do something that's already been accepted multiple times by, you know, all the authorities having jurisdiction in town.
No, sir?
I mean, I do agree with the sentiment, and I think the best course of action here is just to make sure that we specify these on the plans, kind of in detail going forward, that just avoids confusion everywhere, and then we don't wind up in this situation. And it's hard to do it, things that happened in the past, but I think that's what we should strive for going forward.
Okay. I mean, without, you know, because I don't want to relitigate something we already made a decision on, but in the more generic, I mean, it's, you know, I, I understand that no one here is an engineer, but at the same time, as I pointed out in one of the hearings earlier, is that if something is gonna not have discretion, then that's how it should be written. Have the discretion to make a decision, then it's up to us to do that. I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna defer without thought, I guess is what I mean, just because that's not, you know, what I do as a job every day, but we are required to do these things here, and we have the set of rules that we follow that either say we can or can't do nothing. We just had a hearing that said, you know, we discussed sidewalks, it's something we used to be able to deal with, now we can't. That was dealt with in the bylaw, and it said, we don't want you to be able to do that anymore. Not our problem, you know, it's someone else's to deal with. And it went to those who, everyone felt that's where it should be, and that's fine, you know? We did that with other things in the new bylaw. There were things we used to be able to do, we can't anymore. And then there are other things that, you know, we made sure we're, you know, we're still in there. You know, and every decision we make has to be, I think, a one-off because, you know, I mean, there's a, there's a blanket set of rules, but everything's a little different. We just dealt with a lot that's off, and, you know, you're gonna make allowances potentially because of that. Or in this case, you're talking about something that, you know, may have bounced between old bylaw, new bylaw, and, you know, you'll, you know, something got lost in the translation, you know, we had to make a decision. You know, Mr. Champ gave some of the reasons why he did, you know, and I'm sure if you look at the record, everybody gave their reasons for, you know, for. look at the record, everybody gave their reasons for, you know, for whatever. But at the same, to Mr. Duffy's point, you know, any member is absolutely free to ask for whatever information they want on any hearing, whether it's, you know, a hearing or a, you know, an administrative action, you know, you can ask for anything that, you know, is appropriate to ask for, obviously. And, you know, and obviously suggest to any members that you think we should do that. You know what I mean, as part of that? You know, nobody here should be, you know, hesitant to, you know, to say if they think that we should do something, or we should ask for something, or we should wait on something. If you think that, say it. You know, I mean, it's not, you know, we make decisions, majority, supermajority, whatever, and, you know, everybody here, everybody out, and then we'll see where we stand, and then petitioners can decide whether they want us to make a decision or push it off. But if it's something you feel strongly about, ask for it. And, you know, ask the other members to, you know, potentially put off making a decision if you feel it's that important. You know, but we got to do that then, you know? And I think that that's, you know, but that's on all of us to make sure that, you know, if there's something that we're uncomfortable with, or if there's something that would make us feel more comfortable about a decision, then say so. You know, everybody here will hear everybody out. We may always agree, and we may move forward, or we may not, based on whatever is said. It's happened before, it'll happen again. But, you know, we're up here to make decisions, and everybody's got to make their decisions based on how they feel, you know, about what's been presented or what hasn't been presented. And, you know, we go from there on all of them. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your input, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Your concerns?
Yeah, it might, and, you know, the only thing is, later on, I was thinking about it after the meeting, and, you know, obviously, you know, we made a vote, and I'm not even thinking along those lines, I'm just thinking about going forward, that if somebody comes and says, hey, you know, this sidewalk is going to be $30,000 more than that sidewalk, I'm asking you guys for some consideration, well, you know, give me a, give me a couple of estimates here, you know what I mean, maybe? And that's what I kind of wish we had, I wish I had probably, you know, like you say, I probably should have spoken up a little bit more about. And, you know, I just, and it's great to trust builders.
Sidewalks continue to give us headaches despite the fact that we've pushed some of that off elsewhere. They just seem to be a thing.
The sidewalks?
Yeah.
I would like to see the sidewalks in town, in anything we do in the future, be concrete, I'm not concrete, granite curbing everywhere. I think the sidewalks we did on Shoshine Street are going to be torn apart in no time. I think we need, we as a town need to go forward with the granite curbing.
For me, that was one of the things I used to do, because the granite was in, I wasn't as concerned about the sidewalk surface. Had they told me they were doing it like, you know, Shoshine, then I got a concern because you're going to run big plows down East Street because it's a huge street, and you ask to plow, and they're going to rip that right apart, and now I get a different concern. So again, you know, all that balancing of, you know, what are we looking at? You know, they got plenty to bounce off there on the other side now with the plows. I'm worried about the sidewalk, you know? Hopefully, it's high enough traffic that it ends up mattering in the end, but, you know, but otherwise.
I appreciate everybody's input on that.
Yep.
All right. Anyone else with anything else in the, what was this thing called again?
I have a couple of things to.
Other business not known at the time of posting this agenda.
So I have two issues and concerns. One is the continuous issue we have with Burger King down on eighty-five Main Street. You drive by there, there's debris down there again, there's, what do you call it? Black pipes sticking out of the ground from their sprinkler systems, and I just don't think it's maintained as well as it should be. So if we can continue, stay on top of them to give a nice presentation as you commit to Tewksbury off of four ninety-five, and as you drive down Main Street, I think that would be a nice addition. And the other thing I see is, you know, I'm not a stickler for this, but I am, because the Discount Madness site on Main Street, in the past, we've had concerns with developers not maintaining their property, and sometimes with a phone call or an email or something to say, hey, listen, there's debris at the site, there's overgrown brush at the site. And again, it's Main Street, it's our Main Street, and I think it needs to be maintained, and it's not the most appealing look as you drive down Main Street. I know the site is not being developed and so forth and so on, but, and my last concern is the project that we talked about giving them the occupancy down on High Number on Main Street across from Boudreaux's. There hasn't been too much activity down there at all. Are they back operational again?
You just put the gas utility in there, I know that this week, yeah.
But they were trying to get the building going so we could start, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So just to back up a little bit, for eighty-five Main Street, for Burger King, I can certainly reach out to them. I know that we've had to reach out to them in the past. For thirteen twenty-five Main Street, the old Discount Madness, the special permit has expired for that, so the planning board doesn't have specific authority to maintain maintenance and landscaping and things like that, but I can certainly send, you know, a friendly letter just because it is along our Main Street, of course. And then for twenty-one thirty-one Main Street, they had a new contractor take over the job, and he actually applied for all of the building permits Friday. I signed off on all of those today, and he gave me a call to follow up on the items that you folks had asked them to take care of before. They really start ramping up, and as Mr. Duffy noted, they did install gas lines. They are in the middle of revising the water connections. They had originally done smaller pipes than would accommodate sprinkler systems, so they have to cap those and put in new lines. And they should be getting a tentative construction schedule, kind of an estimate of when all the buildings should be coming online any day.
It's been the hottest site to keep going because it's like there's been turnover after turnover after turnover. Unfortunately, again, it's on Main Street, you know, and it's a big project, so hopefully they can succeed in getting it completed down there, so.
Should be moving along.
Good.
The only couple, one I would like, just because Mr. Patel brought up the Discount Madness site, just, you know, I'd like to just, I know no one's listening at this point, but, you know, point out that this is, you know, keep this site in mind right now when you think about, you know, when we're trying to work with the petitioners when they come in, to reach, you know, a reasonable accommodation to get projects going and to get things onto property that, you know, is either not being used or, you know, could be used better or whatever it is. Every time you drive by that and look at that, please keep that in mind, because the alternative of us trying to work with petitioners to get projects going and to get them approved and, you know, to, you know, to sometimes give a little to get a little, your potential alternative is just things that sit there, and you stare at them, and they go to pot, and they stay like that until somebody finally gets around to, because they've run out of everything else, to, you know, take a place like that. I mean, you just mentioned the other site that for the longest time, you know? And, you know, try not to forget those things. I mean, if you're fine with that, and that's your preference, is just sort of derelict sites sitting on, you know, whether it's Main Street or wherever, fine. Not my preference, obviously. But if you aren't one of those folks, then, you know, please keep those in mind when, you know, we're trying to make things work and, you know, figure out, you know, how to get to a yes if we can. But that's my own.
Steve, you and I on the board have worked, we worked diligently to try to get that Discount Madness site, you know, to a point where we were, you know, comfortable with them doing what they wanted to do there in the years past, and also the other site that we talked about across from the Boudreaux Automotive. I mean, we worked on that, you and I, on the board, years, four years ago, trying to get that site so that they were able to put it together. Again, it's not coming to fruition, but I just think it's very hard, you know, so these days, but.
Not because, not that it matters at this point, but being as we're a third of the way to the new census, any hope of finding out the census that was done in two thousand in our actual numbers?
You mean twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those were published in July.
I thought we were still waiting on, like, the official official. Is that the official now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we doubt, we'd have our number.
Yes.
And we have a project that should.
Tip us right over.
Tip us back over ten percent.
Correct.
So for that, since we do finally have the official number, I missed it in my summer travels, apparently, which is nice, but.
You're moving travels.
Exactly, no kidding, right? Just to, you know, point out to everybody, you know, there are a lot of communities. I mean, I know we'd like to be better, and we could be better, and, you know, there's a lot more than we could do to make sure that people have, you know, places that are affordable and, you know, can be in the town or stay in the town or whatever. But there are a lot of communities that, you know, can immediately roll themselves right over pretty much and be right back at ten percent, which, you know, again, is the minimum, but it gives you the protection of not having forced projects on the town. And that's no small thing. You know, ask some of our surrounding communities what they've gone through when they weren't in that position. And, you know, I hope everyone will appreciate the efforts put forward by whomever, you know, whichever board, whichever people, that give us that opportunity that, you know, some other communities would kill for, because they know exactly what's waiting around the corner for them now that the numbers are out, and what they could be facing, that they can't do a whole lot about.[1738.32]